I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2014. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the chair. Could we have roll call, please?
Nolan Lojowski, Jagiello.
Here.
Isabella.
Here.
Vice Chair Foster.
Here.
Chair Merk.
Here.
Nicklin.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster, could you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just, with liberty and justice for all.
Public communications is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Does anybody that wants to speak on an unscheduled item? Is, oh, good. Thank you. Oh, there was not a speaker. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Olrik is going to speak.
Yeah, Mr. Fisher, we were thinking you might want to speak at this point because
I think we're going to continue the item later, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's a few people that are interested in pizza. First of all, I thank you. I want to introduce my family, my wife and two children, just to let you know that there's more involved here than an annoying architect. The, we have the administrative report, August 29th, recommending continuation until October 3rd. I am just urging consideration of expediting this. The report asks, says that there needs to be planning, fire, public works, and SEQA review. And planning has had the project since May 5th and since the very thorough review of it in preparation of the August 15th report. Fire has been done. We submitted the county fire review along with our plan, so that's already been done. And SEQA, the, August 15th report, the last item, environmental review, states this project is considered a Class III categorical exemption from environmental review per the California Environmental Quality Act. Class III consists of construction and location of a limited number of new structures, including a single-family residence or second dwelling unit on a residential zone. The continuation recommendation calls for SEQA review, and I don't know why that changed from it being exempt to being required. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Olrik, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair Merk. William Olrik, 487 Gridley Road. I have a question and a challenge. Or perhaps it's only I have a challenge, but in, I was reflecting on the work product of the commission, and a lot of stuff walks in the door and folks stand up here. And sometimes there are people that are upset about things, you know, because something's happening in their neighborhood. Sometimes they're, generally speaking, upset about something that's occurring in the community. And I don't know whether it's just an approach to documentation or record-keeping, but I almost, I cannot recall when something came back out from this august body or from the development department that actually indicated there was a resolution or even if it was a status report update that we're still working on it. I'm thinking about variances, I'm thinking about the implication, the implementation of them, you know, Emerald D'Guana thing, for example. And not to make a big issue over a small item, but it took two passes to get a letter that I wrote to you in May. I presume it's been delivered. I never received any confirmation of that. Besides, I did hand two copies of it to Ms. Wald, but nobody ever told me you received it, confirmed that, nor did I, obviously, get a response at this point. So, seems like a long time, but the reality of what I'm trying to get to is, things come in here, they apparently enter into some sort of black hole. And unless I'm completely mistaken, and someone can, and I'm misspoken and someone could enlighten me where I would see the resolution or even a status update of matters that come before this commission, or accurately, as in updated within, say, the last two or three months even, from the development department, as well as, obviously, by extension, the city's own website, which apparently is caught between several departments about who actually is responsible for posting things, or whether the people that are responsible may or may not have enough time to do so. So, notwithstanding, I'd like to reiterate, stuff comes in, I think the people, I myself, and I know several other in this gallery, would like to know what happened, just from an anecdotal perspective, as well as documentation or what might be construed as closure. Thank you.
Thank you. I think he has a good point, actually. It would be cool to have a kind of report of, here's all the stuff that happened.
Well, I guess you're going to have to be a little bit more detailed for me because I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about.
I'll work on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? All right, we will move on to the consent item. The consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. The only item we have is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of August 20th. And could I have a motion on this? I'll make a motion. All right. Any discussion? Could we have roll call, please?
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Okay. Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Could we start with Commissioner Jagiello?
What's on the agenda tonight?
Here, your microphone.
I'm going to recuse myself from one item of the night, and the other item, I did not go by the proper.
I have made site visits to everything on the agenda.
I've visited both sites.
I'm familiar with Whispering Oaks site. I've visited the 306 McKee site and had a long conversation with Commissioner Jagiello about a month ago now.
I'm recusing myself from item two, McKee, and Whispering Oaks. I walked the sites, but no ex parte contacts there.
Okay. Next is the Municipal Advisory Commission, Planning Commission Liaison Report. Apparently, they canceled their meeting in August, so the next MAC meeting will be September 15th. Commissioner, no one is scheduled to attend that. We now come to the public hearing items. The first item is item two. It's a variance, VAR 1401, and design review permit, DRP 1410, to encroach into the side setback for a new garage located at 306 McKee Street. Accessory's parcel number 02100110100. The general plan use, land use designation of the property is low-density residential. The zoning classification is single-family residential, low-density, R01. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, and this has been continued from the August 6th and August 20th regular Planning Commission meetings. Could we hear from staff on this, please? We have commissioners who need to recuse themselves.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Since there's two of our commissioners recusing themselves, that would leave us less than a quarter minute.
Then we'd be in big trouble.
Yeah. So, perhaps we should start with the second item and see if our fellow commissioner, Mr. Lojowski, is going to show up, because we, as far as we know, he's planning on attending.
All right.
If we start with the second item, we can give him a little time.
I got to rearrange all these cards now. That will work for me. Are there any commissioners that have any objection to that, change the agenda?
No.
All right. We will move on then to item three. Design review permit, DRP 1409, to modify the originally approved landscape plan at Whispering Oaks, 999 East Ojai Avenue. Accessory's parcel number 0230172015. General plan, land use designation of the property is high-density residential. The zoning classification of the property is residential special, RS. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. This was continued from the August 20th meeting. And could we hear from staff on this, please?
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is a previously approved project, the five-acre Whispering Oaks Senior Housing Development, which was constructed back in 1981. Has 101 units, consisting of two-story main apartment buildings and 14 bungalow buildings. The project applicant is requesting to modify the approved landscape and irrigation plan for the project site, and that requires a design review permit and review by the Planning Commission. So, the items that they're requesting to modify on the site, actually, let me back up. Approximately two acres of the site is currently landscaped with trees, shrubs, and ground cover, which were planted at the time of construction. And the applicant is asking to modify it in the following ways. In terms of trees, they're requesting to remove 34 trees, and attached to staff's report is a tree evaluation report, which identifies those 34 trees and the reason for their removal or proposed removal. The shrubs, the applicant proposes to remove the existing overgrown and dense shrubs and replace them with drought-tolerant species. The existing dense shrubs act as privacy fencing, and they'll be replaced with California native shrubs that provide the dense privacy, but require less moisture to survive. For ground cover, the applicant is proposing to remove the existing ground cover, which is predominantly flat and of a single species, to be replaced with native plants, such as creeping manzanita, creeping, I'm probably going to really screw up these names, but we'll just go with the native plants and succulents that they're proposing. And they're also proposing to use decomposed granite with, within the existing flow swales and use it in lieu of organic mulch around the shrubs and plants. The irrigation is being proposed for the type of plant material that's proposed, and it'll provide minimum water to the plant material. Per section 10-21204 of the landscape standards of the city's municipal code, we require certain areas of the site to be landscaped, and that's the setbacks, parkways, non-work, and storage areas that are visible from a public street or parking lot available to the public. The applicant is proposing to replace with landscaping, so that's not an issue. It's just a different type of landscaping, drought-tolerant and succulent versus the grass or lawn area that's existing there right now. For the trees, they'll be replacing the trees, they're removing 34, they're going to be replacing 33, with the exception of one tree that does not meet the city's requirements for replacement, because it's not a protected tree. I believe that's it. The only other part of the application, and staff provided discussion in the staff report is regarding the decomposed granite, but they are providing the decomposed granite in the flow swales as well as around the shrubs and plants. The public has received two comment letter, I'm sorry, not the public, staff has received two comment letters from the public regarding this project, and I believe we've provided them to each of the commissioners. Do they get copies? Okay. So, in summary, the applicant's proposing to remove or replace 34 trees due to their current state. The applicant is maintaining over 40% of the site's landscape coverage and introducing drought-tolerant native species of plants that will better acclimate into Ojai's climate. The proposed decomposed granite is inorganic, but is proposed to be used in combination with live plants, which is allowed per code. And staff would recommend approval of the requested modification. I believe the applicant is in the audience if there's any questions regarding plant material or their application.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Could we hear from the applicant on this?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Douglas Tapking. I'm the executive director for the Area Housing Authority. This is our project. Tonight, we have with me Bud McGee, the housing director for this property, as well as Craig Lopez, the principal architect, and Dave Davidson, the landscape architect. They are here to answer questions, should you have any. The proposed water conservation landscape renovation at Whispering Oaks is being funded through an energy performance contract with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we are working hard on its green program, and this is one of those. The Housing Authority recently completed a similar project in Piru on about three and a half acres, in which we experienced almost a 51% reduction in the amount of water that we were using in order to maintain this type of landscaping. Through this program, all units at Whispering Oaks will also receive new low-flow aeriators and faucets and low-flow showerheads. Also, we've installed solar power to help with the common area lighting and main building common areas. We are in agreement with staff's recommendations to approve and thank the staff for their time and effort on working with this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Tapking? And do we have any questions for the architect or the landscape architect? Anybody? No? Okay. This is a public hearing. I have three speaker's cards here that are apparently from the applicants, because I have one for Mr. Tapking, and one for Mr. Lopez, and one for Mr. Davidson. You don't need to have a speaker's card unless you want to actually get up and say something. Bill Wyrick, however, has his own speaker's card.
Chairman, members of the commission, I was looking for the tree report map that is in the attachment materials, and there's reference there that a tree report map is attached. In what is posted to the website, I can't find it. And the reason I am asking that question, I see the list of the trees in the matrix, but I don't see the actual map. I went to the site and I was trying to get a feel for where these trees are that they're taking out in terms of how that affects the quality of the landscaping as experienced by the people living there. And I was looking for the detail of how large the trees were that they're taking out, what size trees they're putting in relative to the shade coverage before and after. I couldn't find that information. And if I'm missing something, I did not see it posted to the city's website, but those also mirror my concerns, if they're taking, what's the net shade effect of all of this tree removal? And I just don't know. I tried to find out and was hoping that there was a tree report map as referred to, but I can't find it on the website attachments. Thank you.
Mr. Davidson, or somebody, do you have a map that we could look at, that we could?
It's in the staff report.
It's in the staff report?
Yes, it's in, can you see the staff?
Yeah, we have a copy of it in our.
Yeah, well, he's wanting to, can I just speak off the.
Sure, yeah.
Dave Davidson, landscape architect. Actually, two documents. One is the tree map that goes with the tree report, and then, as part of DRP submittal, there's a tree plan. And the removal trees, which it says on the tree plan, removal and replacement trees, are all not trees that need to be reported on. In other words, the ordinance concerns oaks, sycamores, mature, and heritage trees. And there's one dead tree that is a sycamore. That's the one staff referred to. And thank you, staff, for your help on preparing this. And that tree will actually be replaced, and all the other trees will be replaced. And a couple more trees are proposed in the actual drawings for the design, so that the shade, and as is reflected in the tree report, all, you know, the site has a combination of smaller trees that are much less than 12 inches in diameter, that are various species. And then, there are some lovely mature trees that are, some of them well over 12 inches in diameter. There's oak trees up to 50 inches in diameter. All these trees are going to be preserved. And in fact, the tree report has recommendations to try and even augment the care that's been given to those, to keep those in good shape for perpetuity. So, as far as shade cover, while as, when the, all the trees that are proposed for removal are because of health reasons. They haven't thrived there. Some of them are not species that are as conducive to this environment. So, that initially, if the project is approved and installed, there will not be as much shade as there is right now. But in the future, there will be then shade that was intended when the project was approved. And the best shade trees there, the mature trees, will not be touched.
Great.
I have a question for Mr. David. Are the trees that are being removed, are they slated to be replaced with new trees? Are the proportions in place per, you know, city regulations?
Yeah, there's, the plan that was submitted with the DRP stipulates remove and replace, so all those trees will be replaced.
So, then there will be ultimately a net zero or a net gain of trees?
They'll actually be, we're proposing more trees than there aren't.
Okay. And as far as the shade factors go, is it, to a large degree, a matter of just trees maturing? Time will allow those trees to grow and provide shade?
That's the predominant factor, but what I proposed in the tree report is that we, okay, she mentioned that we're changing the irrigation system. It's all sprinklers now, and we want to go to drip irrigation, but to, which will save water. But the problem with the 34 trees that are being removed is they didn't get enough water. So, I would like to have an overlay of valves that are dedicated just to the trees, so that the ones that we're moving, that are there right now, they don't really provide the shade that you would expect from a healthy tree, because they're not. I'm hoping that what I propose, and what has worked for me in the past, is that the trees will thrive with the proposed system and will have more shade. It will take years, a few years, but the net result will be a much shadier environment.
Thank you.
I have a question. Today, when I was walking on the site, there's one thing I noticed with the plan and thing, along the parking, coming up and down the whole residence there, there was not really anything for tree planting, for cars and shade. Are you going to consider that at all?
We just used the footprint that was there as far as the parking lot. Now, I think it's been worked on in the last few years. So, the city has looked at the parking lot in the not-too-distant past. We haven't proposed any additional planters there, although along the side that is, where the parking and the driveway is hard on the property line, we'll replace the trees. Some places, it isn't listed as removal, because there's not even a tree there, but we can tell where there was a tree, and we're going to install those trees.
I noticed, if you could recall that, the western boundary, there was trees along there, and there were a lot of cars sort of hugging that fence line.
That's exactly where I'm talking about.
And the parking in against the buildings, it was, you know, open, and I just noticed when I got back to my vehicle, how hot it was, and, you know, the people living there and having a cool vehicle to come back to. So, it's just a little point, it's something I noticed today.
Well, on that western side, there are pockets for trees, and there aren't any trees in probably half of them. And so, there, I'd say then, my guesstimate, without looking at the plan, is there'll be twice as many trees along there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? No? Thank you.
Okay. Craig J. Lopez, architect, AIA, out of Camrio. I might want to give you some history of this project. I was one of the original design architects with Leach and Keough Architects back in the early 80s on this project. I spent many nights working on these plans. And through the years, I've been in practice for 31 years now, I've worked on a lot of projects for rehabilitations for this project. Consequently, we were able to find some of the original landscape planting plans. And, you know, I have a pretty good working knowledge of the flora and fauna that's there. And a lot of the trees that we're removing or taking out are, have been placed by the tenants, or they're what they call volunteers of this seed and that seed has come up. The, a lot of the trees that originally were in the, some of the shaded areas, again, through the movement of water and swales over the period of time, have lost their water. So, what we're doing is basically very beneficial to the entire landscaped area by this new irrigation system. And I can assure you that it's our intent to make this a more enjoyable place for the seniors that are there. It's very beautiful, very calm and quiet now. This new type of, new landscaping will enhance that, and the ground cover, the type of ground cover that we're proposing, and the new plants out front in the open area, you're going to have color all year round through native California trees and plants and shrubs. Thank you.
Can I, if I could, Craig? I think it's, I see the pathways going through there, and it looks like it's a very inviting habitat of flora there. And I'm curious, are there areas set aside for the residents for, you know, inter-social seating?
There's seats there. There's seats in there, I don't know if.
I'm not really, I'm not seeing it here.
Maybe I didn't call out, but there's, I think there's four or five park benches there. And then also, there's.
So, you've carved out areas where social interaction can take place?
Right. Or, you know, just, you know, someone running for a walk or whatever can rest in that area, because it's a very shaded area, right? Yeah.
Good. I think that's very important.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak on this project? I think we're pretty much done. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Any discussion? Hey, look, Commissioner Lojowski.
My apologies to both the applicants and to the commission for being late. I got here as soon as I could, so.
We're pleased you're here. Thank you. Discussion or a motion? See what you have to say.
Well, I just think the landscape plan has been, you know, well-thought-out. I think the, just the way it's laid out and giving that drought-tolerant feel, that, you know, the addition of, there's a bit of lashness in it as well with various plants, the way it's just been mixed in and done, I think it's been really nicely done. One thing I did want to ask about is the decomposed granite and the swales. It's obviously going to be stabilized.
Yes, well, we'll be putting a harder binder in it.
Yeah. Because some of them are.
Material, right?
Yeah, some of them are quite deep.
And then, in some of the deeper swales, we're going to be adding, I think, what the forge, minimum diameter rocks, and then just in those deep areas, so that the water can flow through.
If you.
If you're going to ask any more questions, Craig, you need to come to the microphone.
Actually, do just have one more question. And then, one other question I had, the reason for the decomposed granite between all the shrubs as well, what was the reasoning for that?
Okay. First, for the drainage issue, yeah, on the, as you saw, there's sort of corridors between the buildings. That's the typical situation. And the main swale there, as Craig mentioned, we would be using maximum four-inch diameter granite river rock, which is, like the plants, indigenous to the area. And so that that will be in the flow line and then we'll match that up with the decomposed granite. The decomposed granite, as Craig said, will have a binder so that it will not erode and, or to a very small extent, and also will help with palliation and the elimination of dust and possible air pollution. As far as using the decomposed granite as the ubiquitous ground cover, the intent is to get away from what, when I went to school, was called ground cover, which was using 100 little tiny plants to cover a 10 by 10 square foot area. We want to plant one substantial, either native or of similar environment plant that will spread out and cover that and be something that's going to live healthy and cover that area for a lot longer than most of the small ground covers would. And as part of that process, what we did on the site in Piru and others that I've worked on, is to eliminate the organic ground cover and just use the decomposed granite. That way, it has a clean appearance all from the start. If someone wishes to walk on it, they can without disturbing the appearance or the ground cover. Because if someone walks through the organic material, then it's, usually gets disturbed and it's not as effective. Then, over time, these plants are going to grow out, be low and spreading, and cover up the decomposed granite. So whether it was, as I call it DG, decomposed granite, or the organic material, it's going to have a plant growing there, most of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Okay.
I guess I have another question.
Well, okay.
And it goes back to what Commissioner Nicklin was, I didn't quite understand, on the western side there, I think he made a good point, that there seemed to be a lack of shade and what, I'm not quite sure what I heard, that there, there's, the planters are there, but they're not being utilized or they're underutilized. So is the new plan taking that into account and with new trees being planted in that area? I'm not, in those abandoned planters, if you will, adjacent to the parking spaces? Just need clarification on that, at this, as the way the plan is, indicates to us now.
Yeah, I guess the numbers started out from account of the existing trees. And there are places where there once were trees, but those weren't part of, counted as, as trees to be removed or anything because there's just no tree there now. So if you're looking at the plan, I think you can probably identify where you expect there a tree to be, where there's a bulge and the plant are there along that western side.
Correct.
And, yeah, that's the intent.
So I see, I mean, I see one tree, I think, in that one bulge, particular bulge, as I'm looking at the general landscape plan here to the, so is that, I guess what I'm asking, is that a newly planted tree or is that existing?
Uh...
L 2.0?
Yeah.
That's proposed. It's proposed?
Over the years, some of that, those shrubs have turned into trees.
Hmm.
Okay, they've gotten so large, and then they've been cut back down, and they've actually taken out the original trees in those finger planters. Now, granted, that's all parallel parking along there, okay? And there's not that many finger planters that allows for a large 24-inch, 15-inch box tree. But where there is room, we're putting one. The area that we, to plant along that westerly border is in some, is no more than two foot six inches with the curb. And also, there are retaining walls built by the property owners next door that prohibit any sort of deep root growth along that area. So that also could have contributed to the death of those trees in those areas. But I assure you, in those finger planters, there will be trees. But, you know, they're not every, every parking stall. I think there's maybe three or four or five parking stalls, then a finger planter.
Right, right. I'm seeing one as you come in the main...
Right.
...entrance here.
Right.
There's a, and it, there's nothing shown in there, in that first finger, and I would think something would be indicated there. But you're, what I think I'm hearing, you're telling me it's existing or...
Mind if I look at the plan here?
Mm-hmm. 2.0.
Yeah, you know, that's a graphic typo. There's one tree shown, so if you want to condition that, we need to put this plant there. All those, there will be trees there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly why they aren't indicated, but the intent was for them to be there and I don't think anyone would have a problem with saying that they're conditioned to have the trees that were originally approved there. Yeah. Yes.
Are there, are you seeing there are trees that are originally approved to go there that are just not graphically displayed?
Well, no, it's all shrub now. It's all dense, dense.
Okay, all right.
It's, it's...
It's, they're done.
It's dense shrub.
Okay.
Right. And that's all has to be...
So somehow, we need to get the information that's going to let us know that that's going to happen and we can condition that. But, but then, that may require actually calling out the, a specific type of tree or an embellishment to your plan.
Exactly.
That sort of thing.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any other discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Chair, before a motion is made, staff has been jotting down a few conditions to be added to the project, reflecting what the discussion that's been going on. So whenever you're ready to make a motion, I can read some of those conditions off.
Right. That'll be part of the motion. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to listen to those?
Sure.
Those motions at this time? I think so.
These are extra conditions.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Or conditions, rather, yeah.
Okay, so to start, I believe I heard the applicant, when they were making their presentation, talk about lighting. And staff has never reviewed any lighting plans, so I would just first condition that a proposed lighting plan shall be provided to the community development department for...
No, we're not, we're not discussing lighting plans.
No, we're not. There's no lighting. Yeah, it's all existing. It's just existing, but we just added solar to it. That says, there's nothing for...
Oh, okay, so...
Yeah, so this is just landscaping.
Okay. I, I understand that. I heard him talk about lighting, so I wrote down a condition that if he's proposing lighting, that we would need to see that lighting plan.
Right. I think all we're talking about was solar power for the lights, right?
Regarding the decomposed granite, staff would like to add a condition requiring the decomposed granite to be at, to have a binder added, and that the decomposed granite be four inches in diameter.
No.
No.
That's the, that's the...
That's the under...
Oh, the rocks.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, is that, I don't know if that's shown on the plan at all, but that's just going to be, yeah, as needed.
Okay. And staff would also like to add a condition that the applicant shall provide a final site plan or landscape plan that shows the proposed sitting areas and types of benches, because that's also not noted on the plans. And then the last one, requiring that the finger planters be shown on the plan and trees planted within those finger planters per the city's requirements.
Does that all agree with you guys? Okay. Well...
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
If there's an order. Design review permit DRP 14-09, I make a motion to adopt it, which is to modify the original approved landscape plan at Whispering Oaks, 999 East Ojai Avenue, that we accept the SEQA categorical exemption and adopt PC resolution number 1409. Approving design review permit DRP 1409, subject to the findings and conditions approval, with those conditions as recommended by staff at this hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Logowski?
Aye.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Isabella?
Yes.
Vice Chair Foster?
Yes.
Chair Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we look forward to seeing that in landscaping. It'll be nice. All right, we are now going to return to item two. Jump right in if you'd like to.
Sure. I need to recuse myself because I represent, I'm the contractor on the particular project.
All right. And Priscilla, let's hear one of them.
I'm recusing myself on item two because I've had contact with the owners.
All right.
So we're left with a bare quorum to discuss item two. Item two is variance, VAR 1401, and designer view permit DRP 1410 to encroach into the side setback for a new garage located at 306 McKee Street, assessor's parcel number The general plan land use designation of the property is low density residential. The zoning classification of the property is single family residential, low density, R01. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And this meeting is continued from the August 6th meeting and the August 20th meeting. So, can we hear from staff on this, please?
Thank you, Chair, and members of the planning commission. The item before you is an application for variance to allow for a seven-foot encroachment into the required and existing 12-foot side yard setback for the construction of a new 440-square-foot two-car garage. In addition, the applicant is also requesting staff's determination on the definition of a bay window to allow the proposed bathtub projection in the existing garage, or the proposed garage conversion, to project into the proposed reduced side yard setback by 24 inches, leaving a three-foot side yard setback. The application has been deemed complete and was scheduled for, like the chair said, August 6th. Staff requested continuance to August 20th. August 20th, the applicant requested continuance, so we are here tonight. And just to give a little history on the property, back in 1970, by conditional approval, the city, conditional approval, the city of Ojai Planning Commission granted a variance to the property located at 306 McKee to reduce the lot width of the newly divided lot from the required 100-foot width to a width of 87.5. And at that time, the property was zoned R0 and a half, which I believe has since become R01. In October of 1970, a building permit was issued for the construction of a single-story 2,377-square-foot single-family dwelling, which met the requirements of the zone, including parking and setbacks. Since that time, several building permits have been issued for interior remodels and one addition. As was mentioned, the project site's located in the R01 low density residential zone and is currently developed with approximately the same single-story, single-family residence as was issued a permit in 1970. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing two-car garage into a master bedroom and master bathroom, thereby adding approximately 440 square feet of living space and removing the existing required covered parking for the project site. The city requires that in order to convert required garage space into living, living space, they have to first meet the requirements of the city code in terms of parking for single-family residents, which requires two off-street parking spaces be provided, covered off-street parking spaces be provided. And therefore, that is why the applicant is proposing the new 440-square-foot two-car garage to replace the existing garage that conforms to the zoning regulations. However, the proposed garage is being proposed in the required side yard setback for this zone. You'll notice in the zoning consistency, the code compliance table, that for this, this zoning district, which is R01, the side yard setbacks are 12 feet on each side and one of the required side yard setbacks shall be graded to provide access to the rear yard. And currently, the project site has a nine, on the west side, has a 9.5-foot width with a 2.5-foot encroachment into the side yard setback. And on the east side, they're proposing with this variance to reduce the side yard setback to five feet. So now, each side of the project site would have less than what's required for side yard Going back to general plan compatibility, as part of the development review process, new development or the alteration of existing development is to be viewed not only as a freestanding object, but also as part of a street neighborhood and as part of the entire community. The proposed request for variance to construct the new garage, where an existing garage currently meets the regulations of the zone, is not in keeping with the city's land use policy. As modification of an existing conforming structure should not result in the need for a variance to allow for the modification. In addition to that, the land use policy LU 13 seeks to ensure that new development is consistent with the provisions of the Ojai general plan, open space, conservation, safety, and noise elements. And as such, the conservation policy under biological resources strives to preserve the extent feasible, all oak and sycamore trees within and adjacent to the community. The applicant's proposing to construct a new garage that's 10 feet closer than the existing garage to an established 48-inch oak tree, and in addition proposes a new concrete driveway to the new garage that will travel within the drip line of that oak tree. As I mentioned, the zone for zoning district for the property is R01. And in staff's report, I provided a table showing what's required of that zone, development standards, and what the applicant is proposing, and whether or not they comply. As mentioned, the side yard setback that they're proposing, which is five feet on the east side, does not comply with this, with the zoning requirements and would require a variance in order to achieve that. I just wanted to go over, I have a few slides to discuss the variance analysis. The, the purpose, the, the purpose of the variance is to ensure that deviations from the numerical standards of the code are granted when there's a special or unique circumstance that's applicable to the property, which includes, I'll go back to this. Special or unique circumstance, which includes the location, shape, size, surroundings, or topography of the site that keeps them from meeting those zoning regulations. The second finding that needs to be made is that the strict, strict application of the zoning denies privileges to this property that other properties that are located nearby and in the identical zoning district can meet. The standard of hardship with regard to applications for variances relates to the property, not to the person who owns it. And another finding that is also state mandated for variances is that it does not constitute a special privilege. So that's why the planning commission is required to make these findings in the variance. So going back, the project site is located in the R01 zone on the north side of McKee Street. on the north side of McKee Street. I have the red star that identifies the property. McKee Street is split with the north side of McKee being R01 zoning and the south side being R1 zoning. They have slightly different development standards for those two zones. R1, they both require a lot, a lot width of 100 feet. But as I mentioned earlier, 306 McKee did receive a variance to reduce the lot width to 87.5 feet. Front setbacks vary between the two zones. For R1, it's 20 feet. For R01, it's 40 feet. And this, this property does meet that front yard setback at 40 feet. The side setbacks are generally the same. R1 allows for a smaller, one of the side setbacks to be smaller. So you have a 12-foot side, 12-foot side setback on one side and a five-foot on the other, whereas the R01 requires 12 feet. But as I mentioned earlier, this particular project site only has one side that's 12 feet currently, and they're proposing to reduce it to five feet. And the rear setbacks would be the same. These are just pictures of the south side of the street, which is zoned R1, and the homes that line that side of the street. It's a little bit hard to tell with the shade of the trees, but you know, the garages are all along the front there and setback at differing feet from the front property line. On the north side of the street, you have the property just to the west of 306 McKee, which I believe is 310 McKee. And on the right side of the screen is a picture of 306 McKee, and the picture on the bottom is also 306 McKee, showing what the front property looks like today. So going back to the state mandated, state mandated findings for variances. Like I said, the commission must first find that there's either a special or unique circumstance, and the staff has identified, in the staff report, there is not a special or unique circumstance. It's, the project site is zoned R01, and it meets the required development standards of the zone for the size, shape, and location, with the exception of the narrowed width, which received a variance back in 1970. The lot is smaller in acreage than the code requires. However, the proposed variance is not related to site coverage issue, so the minimum acreage wouldn't apply. In addition, the lot is relatively flat, and the topography of the lot doesn't impede the site from meeting any development standards of the zone. The project site was developed in 1970 with a single-family residential structure that met the development standards of the zone at that time and continues to meet the development standards of the R01 zone, including the existing garage. So therefore, no special circumstances apply to this property in terms of that. Another finding that needs to be made is that granting the variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right that's possessed by other property that's in the same vicinity and the identical zoning. The property is afforded the same property rights as the other properties in the same vicinity and zoning district. There exists on-site covered parking for two cars within a garage that meets the setbacks of the zone. Further, the site and depth of the lot would afford the property owner if he or she wishes to add on to the existing residential structure to accommodate additional living space outside of any required setback areas. The property to the west of the project site was awarded a variance to encroach into the front yard setback for the construction of a garage, because at that time, the property did not have covered parking on the site, and the applicant wanted to bring the site into conformance with the development standards of the zone. Another finding that needs to be made is whether or not the variance would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Staff has put in their report that proposing the new garage to replace an existing garage that meets the development standards of the zone, the distance between an existing 48-inch oak tree and residential structure will be reduced by 10 feet. In addition, a new paved driveway is proposed to access the new garage, which will encourage vehicular traffic within the drip line of the established oak tree, creating a detriment to the property. Staff does not believe this constitutes a special privilege. By approving the variance to allow the encroachment in the side setback area of nearly 60% reduction in the side setback for the construction of a new garage when the existing garage meets the development standards of the zone would be considered a special privilege as the project site already meets the development standards of the zone. Furthermore, the property owner can convert garage space into livable space as long as they first meet the requirements of Article 14, and a variance is not needed in order to meet those regulations governing the subject parcel. However, in this case, the subject parcel cannot meet this section of the code without a variance being granted. For the, the points I made earlier regarding consistency with the general plan, it is not consistent with land use policy LU 10, which states that a part of the development review process, new development or alteration of existing is to be viewed not only as a freestanding object, but also as part of a street neighborhood and part of the entire community. This, the proposed project has been reviewed in compliance with the provisions of SEQA and the city's environmental review procedures for exemption per Class 3. But again, for projects that are recommended for disapproval, they would not need to meet the SEQA requirements because they wouldn't be a project. Public comments for this project. Staff has received a complaint regarding this project site being a perceived vacation rental. We did research the website, Airbnb, and found that the subject property was advertised as a vacation rental on the website with minimum three-night stays. As noted above, the intended use of the subject property zone is for single-family residents on a single lot. The City Council of the City of Ojai has put a stay on enforcing vacation rentals. So in summary, with staff's report, in accordance with Section 10-22606, a variance can only be granted if it meets all the findings detailed in the analysis portion of this report and indicated above, staff was unavailable to make six of the seven findings that are state mandated. For these reasons above and summarized below in staff's reports, we cannot provide the Planning Commission with findings that they need in order to approve the requested variance. So that concludes staff's report. If there's any questions of staff, I'd be... Oh, I'm sorry. And you also received a letter from, I believe it's from the applicant, yes, from the applicant regarding this project site. Actually, I just wanted to point out a couple more things. I, flipping around through the PowerPoint, forgot to mention before. The Office of Planning and Research provides, you know, training to planners regarding topics such as variances. And I pulled some of these out of that, out of the Office of Planning and Research to provide to Planning Commission. Number one, that the applicant for a variance bears the burden of proving that special circumstances exist to justify its granting, and that the review of a proposed variance must be limited solely to the physical circumstances of the property. The standard of hardship with regard to applications for variance relates to the property, not to the person who owns it. And third, the approval or denial of a variance does not create a precedent for subsequent variance requests because each variance is based upon special circumstances and relates to the site for which it is proposed. So the past grant or denial of a variance for other properties in the area does not moderate, does not mandate similar action on part of the hearing body. A couple variants, a couple of projects that received findings for variance approval, but were later overturned by the courts, found these two, that the desirable project design, community benefit, and the alleged superiority of the proposed design to development under existing zoning relations were irrelevant for purposes of judging whether or not to grant a variance. And the second was that self-induced hardship is not grounds for variance approval. And those two, I felt, related to this project site in terms of project design and having a hardship that is self-induced, relating to a garage that exists on-site that currently meets the development standards of the zone and is now being proposed to be outside of those zoning regulations. With regards to the oak tree, the applicant states in the letter that they provided to you that the proposed garage is being placed as far east on the property to avoid the 48-inch oak tree. But actually, the current, the current garage is more than 20 feet in distance from the 48-inch oak tree, and the proposed location for the new garage would be less than 10 feet from the oak tree. In addition, the tree permit that was issued on June 18th of this year was for the removal of three oaks, not the 48-inch oak, which was depicted on the site plan. The tree report refers to oak number three, which is, as staff was told by the applicant, was an offshoot of the 48-inch oak and was impeding on the existing garage and power lines, and that's why it needed to be removed.
Does that conclude the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chair and Chair and Planning Commission. Appreciate your time. My name is Lloyd Malier. I'm representing the owners Amber and Dave Bazalar on this, on this project. As you have heard from staff, the project is on McKee Street. In fact, what I'd like to do before I begin is present a, just a quick little graphic showing the exact neighborhood. Thank you.
This is just a plan of the neighborhood, basically?
Yeah, just a direct neighborhood. That's the cul-de-sac street of McKee Street. And it's a small cul-de-sac on the edge of what we think is still kind of an urban Ojai. The small neighborhood street is divided into two zones. The south side of the street has four properties that are zoned R1, as staff spoke about, and the north side of the street has three properties that are zoned R01. Of course, R1 requires a minimum of 10,000 square feet of area and a lot width of 100 feet. The setbacks should be, as staff stated, 25-foot front yard setback and a five-foot and 12-foot side yard setback and a 25-foot rear yard setback. It appears that three of the four homes in the R1 zone on the south side of the street do not meet the 100-foot lot width, and two of the four are clearly within the 25-foot front yard setback. R01, on the opposite side of the street, requires a minimum of one acre of lot and a lot width of 100 feet. The setback should be 40 feet front yard, 12 feet side yard, and 25 feet rear yard. None of the properties on the side of the street meet the 100-foot lot width, nor the one-acre minimum lot size. The neighboring property to the west of the subject property is an 18,200-square-foot parcel with a lot frontage of 88 feet. A variance was granted to place a new garage within 15 feet of the front yard setback. That did not affect the look of the neighborhood since there are several homes across the street with garages that are close to the street. The parcel located to the east is on the corner of Kenyatta and McKee Streets, but it accesses from a private road entrance off of Kenyatta. And the home parcel is located to the north of the subject property, and it does not feel like it is part of the McKee Street neighborhood. Our subject parcel is 306 McKee Street. The lot size is 29,780 square feet and 87.6 feet wide. The owners would like to add a master bedroom and a laundry room, remodel an existing bedroom, and move the garage away from the entrance of the home to provide a courtyard instead of a driveway at their front door. The only logical place to situate these are in the front area of the home since the back of the home is fully landscaped in line with the kitchen, dining, and living room that all have major views and access to the backyard, which they would like to maintain. Just to get off a little bit, that the garage, as it's situated right now, is, it's one of those homes where the garage, you have to drive right in front of the entry door to the property, and you have no, no sense of entrance to the property at all. And we think the garage is poorly designed for this parcel. We are requesting a variance for the new garage location that would encroach on the east yard setback by seven feet, leaving a five-foot setback. The addition would not encroach the 40-foot front yard setback. We designed the garage to be as far east on the property in order to have as little impact on the existing large oak tree located in the front yard setback. We have provided an arborist report that states the proximity of the new garage would have little or no impact on the oak tree, and there were mitigations that could be followed. Having the garage encroach the east setback will not have any negative impact on the neighborhood or the property to the east. The property to the east has already established its building development to the northwest of the portion of the 1.5-acre parcel. We are also requesting a two-foot four encroachment into the east side yard setback for two bay windows. This zone already allows for bay windows to encroach into the side yard setback up to 20% of the side yard setback width, which are, which these are within. Bay windows are not defined in the zoning ordinance, and we believe that, and we believe these do qualify as bay windows. So we may not even need a variance if interpreted as such. These bay windows will be a nice architectural projection element that would enhance the architecture and have no impact to the neighborhood and would not be seen by neighboring properties. McKee Street is loaded with zoning nonconformance because it is still on the edge of urban Ojai. These setbacks, especially R01, are meant for the larger streets and parcels in rural Ojai. This is a transitional area, and development considerations feel reasonable here. We kindly request zoning leniency to make the neighborhood feel like a cohesive blend of homes that belong together. In summary, when you, when you look at the overall fabric of the McKee Street neighborhood, 306 McKee Street is a perfect transitional parcel with a generous front yard setback. And the width of the lot development would appear to be in conformance with the zoning intent. When all is said and built, the location of this garage will be completely appropriate for the lot. The 306 McKee Street frontage will be enhanced, and the property values of the surrounding homes will be increased. The owners of the homes theoretically most impacted by the variance, the sayers who have the 1.5-acre parcel immediately to the east and the Burks directly across the street at 309 McKee Street have already expressed their written support. Now, I'd also like to go over the five points that staff has brought up in their variance analysis for special circumstances and for the property. And what is it, the zoning, the findings? I'd like to challenge those findings. So, let me get this straight here. Under the variance analysis, A, there are, staff states there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including the zoning, location, shape, size, surroundings, or topography, so that the strict application of these zoning regulations denies the property privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under the identical zoning district classification. We, we believe the property, well, the property is zoned R01. R01 requires a one-acre parcel and a lot width of 100 feet. The project does not meet either of these requirements and therefore does have special circumstances that are applicable. If the lot was 100-foot wide or if it had an additional 13,780 square feet, we may not have needed to request for a variance. Granting the variance, item one, is necessary for preservation enjoyment of substantial property rights possessed by other properties in the same vicinity and zoning and unavailable to the property for which the variance is sought. The McKee Street cul-de-sac neighborhood of smaller properties, in which almost none of them comply with the zoning setbacks or size requirements. The neighbors across the street from 306 McKee Street encroach the front yard setbacks and the side yard setbacks. The neighbor to the west did receive a variance for the garage, which fits into the fabric of the neighborhood because of the homes are smaller and of higher density, because the homes on the street are smaller and of higher density than the zoning requirements. The current home does comply with the setbacks, but that does not mean this is a case of good design. Currently, the garage driveway is located directly in front of the entry door to the house, not allowing any front yard or courtyard to enjoy these, to enjoy for guests and owners when entering the house. The rear of the house is open to the kitchen, dining, and living room, and any addition to that area would block view and access to the rear yard. Approval of this variance would also improve the look of the property from McKee Street. Number two, would, from the, this is from the variance analysis, would not... Number two, would, from the, this is from the variance analysis, "Would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to the property or improvements on the vicinity and zoning district for which the property is located." We have had an arborist review the plans and prepare a report that states the addition would not be detrimental to the health of the 48-inch oak tree. The driveway proposed is a pervious decomposed granite, so the tree's roots would be allowed to receive rainwater, if that ever happens. Footing, and we're also proposing that the footing of the foundation for the driveway and the addition to be hand-dug, so as not to disturb the root system during construction. And also during construction, we will try to fence off as much of the root area as possible to preserve that. Item number three on the variance analysis, it does not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity and zoning district in which the property is located. As stated previously, the rest of the neighborhood does not comply with their zoning standards, and the neighbor to the west was granted variance to encroach the front yard setback by 62.5%. In fact, the entire garage is located in the front yard setback. We are only requesting a five-yard setback, as enjoyed by most of the surrounding neighbors on McKee Street. Number four, "Does not allow a use or activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized in the regulations." We are not proposing living space within the setback or any other restricted use. We are not proposing to convert the garage into living space. We are proposing to remove the garage and relocate it, so we may provide a master bedroom addition. And number five, "Would not be, would be inconsistent with the general plan." As stated previously, the garage driveway is located directly in front of the entry door. The owners would like to provide a new two-car garage on the site without gaining any setback advantages that, what the McKee Street neighborhood, rest of the McKee Street neighborhood currently enjoys. Part of the reason for the variance request was to place the garage as far away from the oak tree as we could. The garage placement was reviewed and approved by a professional arborist. Our plans do not call out for a concrete driveway. We are proposing a pervious decomposed granite driveway. And that being said, I would like to have the owners come up and do, say something on their behalf as well, unless you have any questions.
That would be great. Do we have questions for the architect? I guess that would be great. Thank you.
Hello, we're Dave and Amber Bazalar. We live at 306 McKee Street, and we're the owners of the property under discussion. Thank you for reviewing our variance request. First, we want to say how incredibly happy we are to have moved to Ojai. As many people have said, we didn't choose Ojai, it chose us. And we love it for all the reasons we believe you would love it too, which is first and foremost, the people, the sense of community, and the quiet peace and tranquility. Our home at 306 McKee Street is our forever home. It's where we intend to retire and grow all together. Our proposed renovations will allow us to make it a home in which we can comfortably do that and share our experience with our family as it grows. Over the last 18 months, we forged strong bonds and friendships in this community. After we speak, you'll hear from two of our neighbors who border the east and north sides of our property, those that would be impacted by the renovation, and they are fully in support of these plans as, like us, they believe it will help increase property values and maximize curb appeal. We want to quickly address the rental of our home, since we know it'll be a point of conversation today. We have chosen to occasionally rent our home in Ojai as we transition from LA to help cover some of our construction costs. Currently, we are unaware of any city ordinance preventing us from renting out our whole house, either long or short term. And however, if there is such an ordinance change in the future, we'd be more than happy to abide by it. Secondly, it's both considerate and caring neighbors and homeowners who have just spent a large sum of hard-earned money on renovating this house. We want to stress that we're very careful about the people to whom we rent and that they are always respectful of both our neighbors and our property. We believe that Lloyd, our architect from whom you've just heard, has effectively provided valid rationale in favor of the variance. The fact remains that there is not a single home on our street that complies with the current setbacks that we are being held to. In closing, we just want to restate how much we love Ojai, and for us, it's all about being respectful and contributing members of this community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Do we have questions for you? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I have a couple of speakers' cards. One is for Ruth and Simon Sayer.
I'm Ruth Sayer, from 811 Kenyatta. The, our side house butts the Bazalar's backyard. And this house has, we've been in Ojai about 25 years in our house. That house has not been lived in until the Bazalar's bought it, and the backyard, which was a mess of stones and weeds, is now really a absolutely beautiful backyard that should be on the tour, as is the house. And they have done a wonderful job in fixing it up, and the backyard design is just absolutely wonderful. They have been a real addition to our neighborhood. They are kind and generous people, and I, both Simon and I feel very strongly that you should consider allowing them to continue on with the, they put a huge amount of money, plus love and good taste, into their property. So, we both feel that they richly deserve to get the variance in this little house that was never lived in for more than two weeks in over 25 years. This is a real addition to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sayer. I have another card here from Bonnie Burke.
Bonnie Burke, 711 Kenyatta Street. We live on the corner of McKee and Kenyatta, and the Bazalar's house now is just so beautiful, what they've done to it. We would hate to see them not get this variance. As far as the people that they're renting out to once in a while, we never know they're there. It's so quiet. The only way we know is that there's a different car parked over there. But we would love to have you okay this variance, because of course we want to keep them here. They've done a wonderful job with the house, and the neighborhood is lucky to have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. And Jim Burke, I have a card for you as well, if you'd like to come up and...
Good evening, Commission. Jim Burke, 711 Kenyatta Street. I've been a resident for almost 77 years at the neighborhood and a property owner for 50 years. And the Bazalar's have done a terrific job on their property. It's incredible. They spent a lot of money. I think whatever they request, I think you ought to give it to them, because they're an addition to the neighborhood. Any questions?
You know, I do have a question, actually. On this map that Mr. McClair gave us, so your property is right here on the corner, is that right?
711, right in Kenyatta.
But right up against there is on the side here, right? You would share this property line?
McKee Street, or Kenyatta Street, right here?
Yeah. Oh, you're right here where it says, oh, okay.
Chairman, if I can let you know, it would be the Sayers who bought the property.
They have that whole big piece of property. Great, thank you. And thank you for speaking, Mr. Burke. Appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Wyerwick, you've been here all night. You could...
Watch it.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion. We close the public hearing.
All right. Do we have a second? Someone has a second.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, discussion or a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the variance.
All right.
I would like to have further discussion.
Okay. Well, we don't have to rush into this.
Yeah. So, we heard staff's report, and there were very clear guidelines under which we grant variances. So, I guess I haven't really heard, as lovely as the applicants are, I haven't heard arguments that actually support us contradicting staff's findings. A lot of the arguments that were mounted seem to be really about the fact that nothing's conforming, that nothing meets the current setbacks. But staff advised us that that is not a condition under which we can grant a variance, that everything else is not conforming. Well, it is Ojai, but then why do we have, why do we have any rules? Why do we have planning? Why do we have zoning? And we're, we are always, as a commission, going to be, then, if we are not following rules, then we're subject to, I am concerned that we are then subject to other guidelines like influence and other things that fall outside the rules and the regulations. And that concerns me as a member of the community. I don't really want to be just deciding who I like and granting a variance based on that. I agree, they have done a gorgeous job with the property, and I know it sat there doing nothing for a long time, but I just would like somebody to help me understand how we can grant a variance based on state-mandated guidelines for doing so.
If I may. Well, I think that Mr. Malier kind of laid those out, at least from my perspective. I think, right off the bat, the fact that the lot is 87.5 feet precludes them from a lot of things. That in itself, to me, is a special circumstance, right off the bat. Then, as we go down the line, each of these, I think they outlaw, you know, there's a, right next door at 310, there is a variance given. Right across the street, there's a different zoning. I think, in my opinion, the evidence is pretty strong that we do have the findings to approve the variance. I also think that this discretion is a valuable tool for the commission and also for Ojai to get around these very stringent rules, which often box people into to things that oftentimes don't make sense. So, that's part of where I'm coming from, in my support of it. But I'd look forward to further conversation in the commission.
We're kind of limited on conversance here tonight.
I guess I'll chime in. I see this neighborhood as being unique in that, and I agree with Mr. Malier, that it seems to be a transition neighborhood. I would refer to almost as a pocket neighborhood. And I look at the surroundings and the context of the adjacent properties there, and very few of them actually adhere to the current ordinances as they are. And I think context plays a big part in, for me, in determining and making decisions in these sort of cases. I also think that my fellow commissioner makes a good point, you know, we do have, ordinances are here for a reason. Now, whether or not they're right or wrong is a whole other discussion. In fact, this points out to me, once again, as a good example of how our, some of our blanket ordinances, which apply citywide, are not discreet enough to be applicable to individual neighborhoods throughout our city. And as a consequence of this, and this is just what we're doing as a commission, as a city, we're pursuing neighborhood plans, and this is a perfect example of why we're doing that. It's because we get into a situation where, if this was the Golden State Track, is that what it is? Golden West Track, where everything is uniform, there's no question, I would say, well, you know, every other house on that track is like this, and it doesn't, to me, sustain any reason to consider a variance. But when you get into these mixed neighborhoods that are mixed with older properties, older houses, they've been there for years, they've been, variances have been granted one time, or they've just been flat-out done and are there because they're there, it gets very gray for me. And so, I submit that I see special circumstance in this property. I see it in the fact that I look at the adjacent properties, once again, and see encroachments of all kinds, side yards, front yards, all this thing. And I think, in a sense, it would be denying the applicant's a privilege that is enjoyed by adjacent properties. So, that's my interpretation of this. I think that it does abide to special circumstances.
Would you like to second Mr. Lajowski's motion?
Sure.
Really?
I'll second that emotion.
All right. Well, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second.
I think that staff would need findings, along with that motion, second, to approve a variance.
Mr. Lajowski, would you like to...
Just remember that with a variance, you have to make all the findings, not just one. And while there's been discussion just about special circumstances, the law, state law, requires that you meet all four or all of the findings as stated in the staff report. So, you'd have to make all of them. And if you'd like staff to come back with that, we can. If you'd like to do it tonight, that's at your discretion.
I'll make an attempt.
All right.
So, in the variance analysis, section A, there are special circumstances applicable to the property. Those special circumstances would be that the property is not an acre, it's actually 87.5 feet, smaller than the 100-foot lots adjoining it.
And what is this, what is the specific privilege that there be denied by that special circumstance?
By the lot being less than 100 feet, if the lot was 100 feet, then the setbacks would be okay.
No, it specifically asks if you have a special circumstance, what land use right are they being denied by those in the local vicinity and in the same district? So, are we saying they're being denied a garage?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, can you explain it? I mean...
Well, and actually, okay, so, going back to this first one, we're talking about special circumstance, there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including location, shape, size, surroundings, or topography, so that the strict application of the zoning regulations denies the property of privileges enjoyed by other in the vicinity and under identical zoning district classification. So, we're talking about...
Size.
The size, the shape, the loca...
He's already indicated, he's saying the size.
Oh, the size.
That's done. Move on.
That's not... Okay, but there's one note on there, one note on there, though, that the minimum lot width, there's already been a variance approved for the site, so we can't use that one.
No. I'm fine with the size.
Okay.
I think that's fine. Let's move on to making that finding. I'm just trying to help you. Denies the property of privileges enjoyed by properties in the vicinity and under the identical zoning district classification. Put the screen up that shows the identical, the vicinity and the identical zone district. And what is it that the property adjacent to them has that they do not have?
Okay. Three-ten...
Those on the map.
Three-ten McKee, they put the garage where they wanted to.
That's...
Which was a...
The state law says you cannot use precedent set by a previous variance. We provided you that in the present, the pro, I mean, we're not, these are not things that we're dreaming up and asking you to apply them to somebody. They're state mandated in court cases. We're trying to help you through this process.
I understand that.
So, the fact that they have a garage up front, they got a variance for, is not a privilege of that right in zone. That's an exception to the right in zone. The privilege to the right in zone would be for them something that is not special. The planning commission, whoever at the time, gave that, when something is so common as to not require a, or not, I'm just really flabbergasted with this, regarding the variance, then you have to change the zone. That's what the law says. So, if every time somebody came in and said, "I'm R-oh-one," you're going to tell them that they can have a garage wherever they want, that's the privilege, then you need to change the zoning ordinance to do that. Because that is not special, that is now common. I just want to be very clear about this, you know, because we have to go back and make these findings, and they're not Ojai findings, they're state of California findings. They're very specific and they are, and they are that way for a reason. And the city attorney's going to look at this and he's going to, and he's going to ask me, "You made these findings and you made them legitimately." So, I'm trying to help you through this, otherwise...
Okay, all right. I think we get the message. What about, I think we have to define privileges. And is it a privilege for, what I'm seeing here, is it safe to say that the adjacent neighbors, to the south, to the west, enjoy a privilege in that they are not subscribing to the code, to our current setbacks? In other words, there's encroachments happening on side yards and front yards all over this neighborhood, so the surroundings are there. And because they are in that, that describes that circumstance, that describes that neighborhood, doesn't that put the three-oh-six McKee at, it's sort of as a outsider to abide by the current code?
Okay, so let's discuss that. Okay. So, the thing of it is, in a legal non-conforming property, they conformed at one time. And the city, the definition of legal non-conforming is, you build your house to the rules and regulations in place at that time, and then the city changes the rules. So, you become legal non-conforming. So, at one point, those people did. If they didn't conform at one time, they would be illegal and not conforming. So, non-conforming means at one time, they did play by the rules. The city felt, and I'm not to question that somehow, either through the city council or somebody, that the rules needed to be changed. And so, the law protects those people when the city changes the law on you. It allows you to keep things that don't meet current standards.
I understand that correspondence.
So, with this particular situation, you know, they're not in that zone district. You can clearly see that the finding says they have to be in that identical zone district, referencing the, I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm trying to tell you that staff did all this analysis, we did this, this is why the report is written the way it is, you know, is because we can't make the findings and you have to make every single one of them to grant a variance. And I'm only trying to help you through the findings, so we don't, because that's what you guys want to do tonight, and that's fine. But non-conforming is non-conforming. That is not a privilege given to anybody but those people who are legal to the rules at the time and the city changes the rules.
Well, let me ask you this. Can we make these findings against your better counsel? And will, I mean, what happens then?
The city attorney has advised me, if the planning commission continues to make findings or make determinations that are against law, their decisions will be just moot. I mean, I don't know, I've never had this happen before. I've never, I've never encountered this in all my thirty years of doing this. Specific to state code, where they're very specific and outlined in detail, if you want to go ahead and make findings, I'll run them by the city attorney and he'll make a determination about whether you can just make a finding that's not in the state guidelines. That's what will end up happening, if that's what you choose to do tonight.
Jump right in here, Rosalie.
I just, I feel like this is sort of a watershed moment for the city. And I think this is the old guard meets the new guard. And, you know, I just, I understand Ms. Wold's frustration. She isn't making this stuff up and they are state mandated. And I don't want to really be part of a commission that just blows off state mandated standards. It doesn't make any sense. I don't want to be told by the city attorney that we have no, we had no basis for making the findings that we did.
I have another question for staff. I'm of a mind to vote against this proposal, so then I'm wondering if we have a tie vote on this, where does that stand?
It fails.
It fails.
A two-two, fails. I would make a recommendation that you either continue the item and allow, you know, I think that, after the incident that happened two weeks ago with the issue with not applying an adopted, city council adopted zone change to application, the city attorney and I talked about this and at length, it was a long conversation the next day. And, you know, we're talking about having him come to meetings where there are controversial items. So, maybe we just need to continue this and then have him sit in the meeting and advise you when you're doing, you know, because that's, I'm not a city attorney, you know. All I could do, and I tried to advise you last two weeks ago, what I thought, you know, you could do, you know, that came in question, was called in question with that, and so I'm just trying to prevent you from that happening again. I mean, there are things that, so, you know, a two-two is definitely a fail. And then they would have to appeal to city council. But, you know, I, I'm, we do our best, we're planners, we're obligated through ethics and laws. I'm AICP, I have, I am bound by my profession for ethics. There's just a certain presentation I have to give to you, and I have to continue to remind you that these are state mandated and it requires, there are other, there are other options available to everyone that comes before us instead of a variance. There are always other options. They can, they could, if you look at this property, I agree, this property never should be zoned R-oh-one. It doesn't, it doesn't, the other ones don't even face it, you know. I wasn't here when they zoned it. But those, but doing the right mechanism takes a long time and it's lengthy and people don't want to do it, they want to go for this shorter fix to this problem. And it just is, variances by the very nature of what they are, are just, they're just locked down by state law and what you have to make and what you can't make. And there really isn't that discretion with them. They're there. Typically, the example that people give for time began is, they're meant for places where you have an extreme slope and the property is limited by topography or something. That's why we're very careful about saying, financial hardships are not a hardship, something self-created is not a hardship, wanting to have your view out the back is not a hardship. All those things don't count. They're lovely, but they don't count as far as the state is concerned. So, with that said, we can either have you direct staff to come back with the findings and give us some, you know, give us some leeway, but I made that proposal to you last time and then got sort of overruled by the city attorney. So, maybe the best thing to do is if there's a question about it, to continue the item and have them here, like I said before. I don't know what to advise you because I think I've tried really hard to make it very straightforward and it's just kind of gone awry.
So, at one time, this property was zoned R-zero, R-oh-one-half. Within that zoning, I think it allows a five-foot side yard setback. Did I read that in your, did I see that in your table?
No, that's the R-one and this property has always...
Oh, it was the R-one.
Yeah, this property has always met the development standards and continues to meet the development standards of the zone, with the exception of this proposal.
As a...
R-oh and a half and R-oh-one.
So, it was the R-oh-one that had the five-foot side yard setback and the twelve-foot on the one, the other side?
It's R-one.
Or, I'm sorry, R-one, yeah. Mm-hmm. Now, are the properties, I'm just brainstorming this thing, is this, my understanding is the properties to the south, they are...
They're all R-one.
They are R-one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, is it, is it within the realm of recent or feasibility to consider a zone change, considering the adjacency? I mean, did they have the right to do that?
Well, you know, you can't spot zone, but it would be contiguous to those properties across the street. And I, I mean, I honestly think they fit more in the R-one zone district than they do, I mean, if you look at the other ones to the north of them, they're very large. I think if you look at the history of the property, they tried to, the reason that they were given the zone, the variance originally, was they created two parcels, eighty-seven and a half. I mean, they were trying to wedge them into that zone district anyway and granted them, you know.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think, I think it would be totally possible and I would, and I think staff would support it. I don't know, what do you, do you see a problem with it?
And I think that's exactly what this, again, this is one of those weird transitional neighborhoods. There's just, it's not, it's hard, there's no uniformity to it.
And I think it was part of that larger parcel in the back at one time, I believe, and, and I think that when somebody cut those properties instead of, you know, people always think that rezoning and general plan, changing the general plan is very difficult, you know, because it's very, just has a lot of discretion to it, you know, you can just say yes or no. But I think that it makes a lot more sense that once they were cut from that large parcel, that they be zoned the same as what faces that street. Looking at it flat like this, it looks like it integrates into the north, but it doesn't. When she turns and you look at the streetscape and you look even at the map that the applicant gave, the eight-eleven is way in the rear. It doesn't have any nexus or connectivity at all with that street. So, I would agree that walking and going down that little street, they all integrate together. And yet, and yet, from a map perspective, if somebody just mapped them, it made sense, but in practicality, it makes no sense that it's set other zone.
So, how could the applicants approach that? I mean, are we looking at a, as an individual lot or as a zone change?
Well, they would probably want them to come in together, the two properties.
Mm-hmm.
The two properties that...
The one to the west and that got subdivided from the main lot?
Yeah, three-ten, yeah, three-ten, three-oh-six, you know.
I understand your frustration. I mean, the state is, you know, fairly clear what they're doing. I think there's still a lot of things that are subject to interpretation and that can be argued, but in this case, you know, this might be the most straightforward approach for the applicants to consider doing a zone change.
Can I say something? R-one still requires a one...
Can you come up to the microphone?
It's my understanding that R-one still requires a one-hundred-foot wide lot width.
Yes, but it allows one side to be, one side yard to be five feet.
Now, what if we have an existing non...
Non-conforming?
Non-conforming nine-foot one, a side yard on one side, right? Our existing home is nine foot six on one side.
Oh, it's not twelve feet?
It's not twelve feet on one side.
Isn't that your non-conforming side? I don't know, I mean, that's what...
It is, okay, if you're agreeing that it's a non-conforming...
I don't know. I guess that would be something that, that staff would... Okay, she's telling me, go ahead.
No, that, if they're, if they want to have five feet on one side, which they're proposing right now, so if we make them R-one, then they're going to have a side yard setback, which is legal non-conforming, because for R-one, you have twelve feet and now they have nine and a half feet, so...
Okay, so, I don't disagree personally, from a personal perspective, that eighty-seven point five is not a hundred feet. And that does put into consideration, that's why I said, moving on from the size, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't know what they're being denied. They already have a garage, so there's not a property right they're being diminished from. They have a very large home and in comparison to what most people have, you know, it's twenty-four hundred square feet, they're asking for it to be twenty-eight, you know, they're not, there's plenty of land for them to have a normal-sized house, you know, so I'm not, that's where I get stuck on this. If we change the zone and they went through to R-one, you know, I don't, I don't know about the nine and a half versus five. Like I said, normally, in most codes, maybe I didn't say this, but I have said this over time to different people that have asked me about this project, lots of times, there's a standard condition in the zoning ordinance that says to the, to the extent the lot is narrow to that required, then the subsequent side setbacks are reduced to that proportion. Do you know what I'm saying?
Proportion?
Right, so eighty-seven point five, you know, is that is...
Fifteen percent or...
Exactly, whatever eighty-seven point five is of a hundred, then we would allow that as a reduction. Because obviously, when you're, when you're creating a code, you're creating a code with those, with the width of the lot, in retrospect, to the side standard, side setbacks, correct? I mean, that's the whole point of doing that. It's supposed to all work out and be geometrically correct, right? So, I'm just saying that, I don't know, I think that rezoning it might be extensive, it might be expensive. Sherry probably knows the fees, I don't, I don't handle that part of it. But if you still, like I said, I'm here to offer any other suggestions, but like I said, I'm just trying to work within the parameters.
Well, let's go back to the garage next door that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't conform, which also had to be a variance at some point. So, my interpretation of that, you know, of a special privilege, you know, enjoyed by other property owners, would be the property owner next door was granted a special privilege to put their garage fifteen feet from the street.
Right, and like I said before, I don't want to be a broken record, but a special privilege is a special privilege. When it becomes so common as to be something that your, variances are supposed to be unique special circumstances, okay? That property next door, as I understand it, didn't have a garage and needed to have one. I wasn't here when they did that, so I don't know how they made the findings for it. But when it becomes so common as that you're using the variance, the idea is you change your zoning ordinance. If the zoning ordinance isn't working, if it isn't working and everybody wants a garage within fifteen feet of the front yard setback in the R-one-oh, R-oh-one district, then change the zoning ordinance.
But, but hold on, isn't that, isn't a special privilege, isn't that in the jurisdiction of the planning commission to determine what a special privilege is? So...
No, I'm saying that we've already decided that the size is the special circumstances and that you're denied the property of privileges enjoyed by the other property in the vicinity under the same zone district. But that property had a variance to grant that under circumstances that are not identical to the circumstances for this property. They were, they are not identical circumstances. And so, just saying, well, we granted a variance there, there are go, she pointed out to you, state law says that those variances granted under that criteria have been reversed under court decisions. We're only providing that information to you, that's all my job is, it's just, I don't, this is just the repeat of two weeks ago where, you know, we've come forward with these findings in here. And I've heard, I think, you know, I've heard lots of nice things about this home and how it's improved and the people are nice and the view in the back, and all those things have to do with the people and not land use decisions. And so, I'm only trying to stay focused on what my profession requires me to do, which is on the land use decision only.
Let me try one more time. Because I, I feel that, I mean, sometimes I question, sometimes I question, you know, existentially what we're doing here. If we don't have the ability to, to interpret these, these things that are subjective in the gray areas of planning, I just, I wonder. So, would, would a privilege enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity, would that privilege be to... would that privilege be to design and build the house they want? Would that...
No, that's not, that's self-created. People, it's, the zoning, if you wanted to design a house that you wanted, then Ojai needs to remove the planning department and their general plan and their zoning ordinances. I mean, that's just as simple as it gets. I mean, it, you know, the zoning, the community, city council who represents the community and the community have adopted guidelines. Those are, those, the planning commission implement, staff, access staff to the planning commission, the planning commission implements those guidelines. The discretion that you have is not to change the, the rules and regulations adopted by city council. That's what, that's just as simple as that, you don't have the discretion. If you were saying to me that they can't have a garage, they're sitting there without a garage and every other, every other house in that vicinity in that zone district had a garage, then we would be talking a different conversation. But they have a garage, they just don't like where it is. They prefer to do something else. And that's not grounds for variance. Under state, under the guidelines and the, and the findings in state law, that's just as simple as it gets. But I will help you if there's something that you can find that they're being denied and that, and that's fine. If they're, if you want to, I, I'm just really struggling with what privilege or property right they're being denied. They have a twenty-eight hundred square foot home, they have a garage, they have yards and, and, and as, I'm just struggling. And, and that conversation tonight was over design, but design is not an issue for a variance either. The fact that you like the design over a different design. Variances are property, meaning the land specific, that's what they are.
So, the reason that they're here before us, I mean, as, as a, that it's dis... What makes it discretionary? The fact that it allows an applicant to appeal a decision? I mean, if, knowing, if we're, if we're, we have this knowledge. We know it's very, obviously, for staff, it's very black and white. At that point, can that, wouldn't, wouldn't it be more advantageous and cost-effective to tell the applicant, there's no way you can qualify for this at the get-go? And, and, you know, put off this, this sort of a meeting? Because really, it's to Noah Bell unless, I think, it's great discussion, but, you know, legally is what I'm hearing. We have nothing to stand on or to base the decision on other than the fact that the zoning is messed up in the first place and it should be changed. And until that happens, they don't have a leg to stand on.
Okay, so, lots of times, variances are subjective. There's, different people feel different ways over the course of many years in planning. People have used them as, you know, to help with, you know, zoning. I think that's why the, that the state mandated findings are so strict as they are. Because, you know, the general plan and the zoning is very specific. People, those go through public hearings and the people that live in those neighborhoods think that that's what's gonna be built. And so, you know, a variance is a public process. So, it's discretionary in that a ministerial project is something that says if you're twelve feet and you're blue and you're this, you get approved. A discretionary project like this one comes before you and you can put conditions on it. You could have, that's your discretion. You could have said, oh, okay, we're gonna grant you a variance, but I don't think you're entitled to the whole thing. I think you're entitled to, let's just say, we can make the findings for a variance. You could say, I, I think you're entitled to a five-foot variance, not a twelve-foot, but a five-foot. That's discretion. You know, if you said, oh, hey, I don't want your garage with the garage door spacing out, I'm not gonna give you a variance, I want you to turn the garage the other way for whatever reason, something, the garage is oversized. If you told them, you, hey, we're willing to grant a variance for, for a garage that's normal size, you know, things like that would be things that, but you have to still make the findings. Those are the discretionary things that you could do, just like you did tonight with the Whispering Oaks. You told them, I want, I want trees and those finger planters. That's your discretion, that's a condition you added, that's, that's what discretion's all about. Why we didn't tell them not to come forward is because under the law, we're not allowed to do that. It is their legal right and due process for them to come before a body of seven people and, and advocate for themselves, that's their right. And, and staff's not trying to stop them from having their due process. I'm just trying to help you through the findings so that we have legal findings that then they won't be back here when, when they're not legal, that's all.
I wonder if there was, would have been a pre-application meeting with the applicants and staff to sit down and you, you explain to them? Because we're talking people, laypeople here, who are not familiar, obviously, with the dotted i's and crossed t's of, of our ordinance. If that would have maybe given them the opportunity to reconsider or look at other avenues before they get involved in a process like this where they paid money out, even if they had to pay for a pre-app, it'd be worth it. But where they put their time, their effort, their energy towards a designer, architect, whatever, and, and get to this point to be told, you don't have a legal foot to stand on. Shouldn't there be something in our process that, that enables an individual citizen to come off the street and have that frank conversation about what they're going? And then if they decide to pursue it, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's just a couple of things. Number one, we do have a pre-application process and it is available to people. However, you know, sometimes people have already done the work. They've already, you know, hired the architect, hired someone to design this for them and then they bring it, you know, they apply for a permit or they come in and they've already designed it. So, we can't control that aspect of it, we can offer the pre-application. But in terms of this project, staff did sit down with them at the very beginning of the process and had a meeting and explained what the findings for a variance were and that this project most likely would not meet those findings and that staff could not support those findings.
And this is before they actually applied for the design review?
No, like I said, we can't always control what...
I'm trying to fit, understand the chronology, just...
Okay, so I had a meeting with one of the applicants representative early on when I first came here. And the way it was presented to me was, it was the exact same situation and circumstances as the lot next to them. And that lot had gotten a variance and that's why they were going for it. And I had not, I mean, I was new, I didn't know anything about this, the, the thing. And I said, okay, well, if you're the exact same circumstances, you're telling me the exact same circumstances? They said, yes, okay. Turned out when we did our research, they're not the same circumstances. The property next door did not have covered parking, didn't have parking at all, didn't even have a garage. And so, they, someone made the finding, it was being denied a, a property right, which was a garage. That's how they made the findings for that one. In this particular case, they already have a legal conforming garage. If they didn't have a garage and they were being denied and they had no place to put a garage, no place to put a garage other than in, in the side yard setback, or as the person said, if it was better for the Oaks for them to move it over into the side yard setback, we would be having a different conversation tonight. But they have a garage.
You're saying their original justification was flawed?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now, I think we need to hear from...
Yeah, could I, could I respond to that? We did meet with staff, we listened and we struggled with the same things that you're talking about, interpretation of what is discretionary. And we felt that we had met the special circumstances by the size of the lot. We felt that the rest of the neighborhood was enjoying privileges of encroachments into setbacks and the size and bulk and scale of that neighborhood. We felt that, that the, that staff's recommendations were, were negative to our approach of, of design and, and not, and not trying to help us establish a definition of what, you know, it was a negative approach to our design. We felt at the, I mean, not, not that they were bad or anything, but we felt that, that there were special circumstances and that the property did meet all those findings, it's just a matter of interpretation. And I felt that this is where we would find interpretation, not a, a half-hour argument and why you can't approve this project. I, I think that there are discretionary points to this that we found and we, and I stated in my letter that, that we found those findings to, to, I, I did it point by point. And, and it's just a matter of discretion. And that's what this is all about, that's what a variance is. Without going through a zone change, without going through a major process costing lots of money and time, this is exactly why we're here and that's why we didn't, we met with staff and we didn't agree with them and we felt like we, we gotta go a step further to find discretion that we feel that were our rights.
Okay, thank you. Well, here we are, I think we should vote. So, I'm gonna call the question. Could we have a roll call, please?
So, it's a roll call for directing staff to come back with findings?
Findings of approval, which is problematic.
I think his, I think his motion was straight approval. I think, is that not correct? You can, we need to re-straight here, because I don't want to speak for you.
So, not adopting the, the disapproval, so no resa being adopted?
You need to, you need to ask him for his motion because he made a motion very specific to approve it.
Could you please repeat your motion?
The motion that I made was to approve the variance based on the lot being eighty-seven and a half feet. Based on the lot, approve the variance based on the lot being eighty-seven and a half feet, the special privileges being the privileges enjoyed by the neighbors of the variances, encroachments on the other properties. What, should I continue going through these?
Yeah, we have to address each one.
So, that would be B. Where would I, what would be the next thing I address? Necessary for the, okay, so B one is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right possessed by other property in the same vicinity, blah, blah, blah. And I would say three-ten McKee is the example of the substantial property right possessed by other property would be the setback of the garage. Two would not be detrimental to the public self. I don't think that would be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of the property. They have a tree report. Three does not constitute a special privilege. I don't think it constitutes a special privilege. Number four, does not allow a use or activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized, blah, blah. That's okay. Okay, the general plan, I don't, the tree report, I think, addresses that. Sequo, not anything to do with it at this point.
And the second?
And...
I'll second.
Just a second there. So, can we have a roll call, please?
Lajowski?
Yes.
Zavilla?
No.
Foster?
Yes.
Merk?
No. So, we've basically turned that down. You can appeal it to the city council or you can come back with another different proposal of some sort. So, we are gonna move on to item four. Design review program at DRP fourteen oh four, request to reconstruct a two-story, thirty-foot-high, single-family residential unit at six oh seven North Signal Street. And staff has asked that we continue this public hearing to, do we have a date for another?
I would like to give this report instead of Heather. Okay, so, one of the issues we had after the decision of the planning commission was the issue of how the motion was made and there's some things that staff needs to be brought, being brought, bring back to you. But also that there weren't any conditions done, they weren't, you know, planning, fire and public works hadn't done them because we were taking it for denial. You don't need conditions for denial. And so, we met with public, or Public Works came over and talked to us last week and they spoke to Mr. Fisher about, you know, the conditions of approval, trying to consolidate this together. You heard him tonight. He's very, excuse me, he's very interested in moving forward quickly. So, we were asking you to just sort of, I guess, continue it to a date uncertain, right?
Yeah, because we have to, we have to notice it first of all.
That's right, so we have to re-note it. The noticing was, already went out today then, we're past noticing for this one? Or, can we do that? We can, I thought it was today at noon? No, I'm saying no, I know we didn't notice it, but it's, so then it would be the next meeting after that. We're trying to work through this for him, but we still have to make sure that it's conditioned properly. So, I know that, like I said, one of the issues that he was concerned about, and I just want to put this into the record, was last city council meeting, there was some talk about a building moratorium and there wasn't really support for it. And so, he's a little nervous on that end of it. But I just want to make sure that you understand that staff is continuing to talk with him, continuing to monitor what's going on. He's already had his building permit in since June, I think it was late June. And he's already gotten his first turn back of conditions back to him. He signed a waiver, we have a waiver here that allows him to move forward at his own risk if he were not, you know, if he wasn't to get approved. So, he's already in the building process, has his corrections back to him. So, just, I was, really just want to move it forward and, but I wanted to just tell you that I, we, staff understands his concerns. We have a really extremely heavy workload at the, at the staff, I'm sure you're aware of that. We do a lot of agendas and a lot of projects. And so, we're trying to move him forward, we're aware of his situation, especially with that. And I'm continuing to work with him over the issue of his lot line adjustment, which is also a separate issue, but I wanted to tell you that. I have spoken with the city attorney and Mr. Fisher over that issue and that is also moving forward. And it's actually in his court, so whatever he decides to do. But with that said, so we'll be noticing it again for approval and, you know, you know, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that, are you sure positively we need to actually notice this for approval again, even though of the public hearing it was? If anybody, I, I really, can we just go ahead and continue? I, I don't want to do anything that jeopardizes him moving forward. So, can we go ahead and just continue this to next meeting? I'll converse with the city attorney and make sure we have to re-note. But I promised him that, I mean, I tried to give him my word that I'd move him forward as fast as I could since it, since, you know, he went through a long ordeal last planning commission meeting and so, and you know, he was here. Go ahead.
Yeah, Heather and I did look at the notice and it didn't say whether it was for denial or approval. It was just a notice on the project description and so, it could be continued.
Okay, well, let's do that then. I would prefer that, I'd like to have staff work. If we can't get the conditions together, then we'll ask for another one. But I'd rather shoot for it and miss it than not, not give the applicant the choice, the chance. He is very nervous about this and he's wanting to move forward.
Yeah, so you'd like us to continue it to the next meeting?
Please, I would appreciate that.
All right, I would appreciate a motion to that effect from someone. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Lajowski?
Hi.
Jagiello?
Hi.
Zavilla?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
And thank you to staff for proceeding ahead with that, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing on that.
So, on, yeah, can I go on to the next public hearing item then?
I have to announce it first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm jumping a lot ahead.
The next item is item five, an amendment to the second unit compliance program.
Yes, and my apologies, I did not have enough time to get this done. And so, I'd just like to say that, as I said in my little brief report here, we're going to the building appeals board on the sixteenth with the same topic in, in common. So, you know, they have also asked that we put on it, having a topic discussion, discussing changes to the actual ordinance itself, not the compliance program. But we're doing both, just wanted to tell, tell you that. So, but without making a lot of excuses, there were a lot of deadlines and I just couldn't quite squeeze it in. And just to give you an idea that I'm working on, I, last Friday was the deadline for getting some extensive demographic information back to SCAG, which ultimately results in our Rena down the line. So, it was important, you don't miss deadlines with, with the SCAG. So, I just want to make that clear. And then also working on the, the environmental for the leaf blower ordinance, so I wasn't idle.
Thank you. Mr. Ware, you've sat through all these meetings and you, I do have a speakers card where you've written five, so...
Fascinating.
Real quick, very short, just to reiterate what Kathleen Wald said. Our BAB meeting is going to be agendized with two parts that will organize the report to you. And that, one is the ordinance, the fundamental ordinance itself. Particularly, I want to say that we, I certainly listened to the planning commission meeting discussing a lot of this. I wasn't in attendance, but I watched the video. And we had already previously discussed the 640 square foot limit for both conforming and non-conforming. That goes back to the workshop that we had quite a while ago. Some of you have been newly appointed since that workshop. But there's a continuity there to look at issues like that that are across both the conforming and non-conforming. So we will be hopefully working with staff to very quickly, after our meeting, get the minutes put together and with Sherry and get that to you before your meeting. So hopefully, hopefully, by the end of September, we'll have something to go to council with in terms of recommendation on both aspects of the second unit program. So I just wanted to do a short report to you on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Can we formally continue this because it was legally noticed as well?
I believe we have to, yeah. Would you have a date that you'd like us to continue it to, yeah?
Oh, the next meeting.
The next meeting?
Thank you, yeah. Oh, yeah. I have to have this ready for Mr. Wierig, so I better not miss you guys too.
All right. Could we have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue this item to the next meeting, which would be, what, September seventeenth?
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Lajowski?
Hi.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item six is directory report and director actions.
Yeah, see, it's a little brief here, but just, you know, the typical tree issues we continue to have with a drought, lots and lots of tree issues throughout the community. And then three political signs, crazy as that sounds.
It's that season.
It's that season, yes. So, and we appreciate people being conscientious about their signage. And so then the next report is the active code enforcement, a log. And again, based on input from the city attorney, we're refining this so that we don't get ourselves in trouble. You know, code enforcement is confidential and not subject to the Public Records Request Act and, and so we put in it what we can to vult the community so they know what we're working on. And we can continue to work pretty diligently. Staff has been really successful in closing cases and bringing things that have been really ages-old, I mean, back to 2012, et cetera. So the list, even though after the Labor Day weekend, we had a lot of complaints yesterday, we continue to try to resolve these and move them forward. And we now are actively, just so you know, are actively meeting and discussing these with the city attorney so that we can bring any of these that have language to resolution.
Thank you. I've been on an email list that Bill Miley's been sending out about a wall on Signal Street.
Yes, sir.
I just, I didn't see it in the list. I just wondered if that's...
That just came up Thursday and our agenda was already done by then. Remember, we work in planning time. There's always, you know, our, we have reports due, you know, days before they get published and then we can't, there's no way, but we could actually get the agenda out if we were doing every single one of these at that day we put it out. We received our first complaint on Thursday, Stop Work went out on that project on Thursday afternoon. Then we received a whole host of complaints on that project on Tuesday morning. And I became aware, and, you know, I should have known this to begin with, but, you know, the city of Ohio has a very strict policy of no contractors can do any work Saturday, Sunday, or on a holiday, only homeowners. So for all you contractors out there, that's why we ended up getting so many complaints on Tuesday morning. Too many people out doing work on Labor Day. But yes, so we are, that is an active case.
Thank you. We had a contractor doing work just up our street on Tuesday.
Yes.
I didn't realize that was him.
No, you cannot, the code prohibits it for Saturday, Sunday, and any holiday.
All right. Future agenda items.
All right, so we had slated for September seventeenth, landscape ordinance regulations, but the city attorney's still looking at those. I think there's some, maybe some misunderstanding about modifications to the regulations or whether it's supposed to be a guideline or a how-to interpret or use the regulations. So we'd like you to move that off to October first. And then the skate park, skate park lighting, I'm still working, I'm sort of an adjunct person to this process, you know? Steve McClary's working with it and he's having a hard time or, I'm not really sure where it's going. I'm kind of on the outlier on that one, but there's issues regarding getting proper drawings and photo metrics and making sure that we know how lighting is, that the lighting, the spill is correct. So we still don't have that moving forward. So that will leave us to the amendment to the second unit compliance program and lots of time to talk about that, I guess. Oh, yes, and 607 North, thank you, Sherry. And I'm not sure, so maybe this is a good time with all these reports, what other reports you were thinking staff needed to provide?
I'll talk to you about that. I was just thinking that it would be nice to have a list, kind of like we do with the, you know, the code compliance or the direct decisions, just a list of, here's all the things that have been on the planning commission agenda in the last six months and here's where they are in process. Because you guys have that, right?
We do have that on our website. Our applicant workload status, every two weeks, we have a meeting and we post that on the website.
Well, if we already have that developed, we can certainly put it in your packet. I think that, I think that, you know, I'm hesitant to take on another duty because we're really kind of overloaded as it is. But if we already have it, we can put it in there. I think that the website is very congested and sometimes you don't really know where to go. And I only say that because when I was new here, it was hard for me to navigate through it. And there's a lot on the first page and maybe people just don't know where to go to it. So maybe we can work with the webpage people to get it a little bit more friendly, but we can make sure that we're putting in the packet and then maybe if they just click on the packet, it would be in there and that would be an easy way for them to get it.
That'd be fabulous, we could do that. I had the same feeling Mr. Wierig did. We have all these meetings about things and then I never hear from them again. I don't know what they're doing, you know? So it would be nice.
Well, we have, I have a log now going to with some of the building permit stuff going on, so maybe there's a way to aggregate it all together. We were talking about it and we're trying to coordinate all of the departments through the process a little bit better and having, you know, there's always a point in time where you, outgrowing a small town and the verbal and, you know, talking to each other and you have to kind of go to paper. And I think we're at that point now where there isn't so much work that, you know, it can fall off really easy if it's not tracked and so we're doing that. So maybe we can incorporate that, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Planning Commission's subcommittee reports, we don't have a commission or an all-in here, so I don't think we can do much on that.
I should mention that the Complete Streets meeting was canceled today.
Oh, it was?
Because of a notification mix-up.
And that brings us to our city council liaison.
And I'll just say, I'll just interrupt real quick and say that we're having, Steve, you want to say, we're having interviews and we're going to have Steve on our group with the neighborhood planning, folks?
I have a packet right here.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
We're going to start interviewing for our neighborhood planning consultants and it begins next week, correct?
Yes, sir, and we're very...
I think it's, oh, this is, okay. So, and I believe we have five firms that are going to be making presentations over the next week or week and a half.
The very left column on the right.
Yes, so we're very excited about that, that we're actually moving forward. And we're glad to have a planning commission on our review team.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Foster for doing that because I'm not able to. Appreciate it. So, Councilmember Blatz?
Yes. Good evening. Chairman Merk, members of the commission, staff, chairman of the building appeals board. Nice to have you here tonight. I'm here in place of Councilman Lara, who has the assignment of being the liaison, but he's attending California League of Cities this week. So he asked me if I could come in his stead and I was very happy to. I haven't been the liaison to this commission for quite a while. And just the discussion tonight brought back many memories of the ten years that I sat on the commission. And I realized once again how difficult a job you really do have. So thank you very much. It doesn't go unnoticed. The thoughtfulness of what comes before this commission is very important. And hearing the discussion tonight reminded me of any, very many meetings that we had when we discussed even things that were more volatile than tonight's issues. And the responsibility for the planning of this community lies right here, so thank you. I also don't think I've been a liaison since a couple of you have been on, appointed to the commission. So it's nice to see you. Thank you. It's a lot of work, but it is very rewarding. I wouldn't have done it for ten years if I hadn't found it to be very rewarding. I'm looking forward to our affordable housing presentation that the planning commission and the council and the building appeals board is going to have. I don't know the date, is it the night, the thirtieth? I'm looking forward to that. One of the issues that is forefront in terms of my philosophy is that we really need to do something for affordable housing, particularly rental in Ojai. So I'm hoping that we're going to be able to get some results started and see what we can do. Other than that, I'm just here to say thank you, unless you've got any questions on anything that the council may be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we are adjourned.